Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Please join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll do a couple of the housekeeping items. The town administrator will take those for everyone in attendance.
And for everyone in attendance, masks are required. On the table to your right is a container of van sanitizer and mask. Outside of the hallway, there is a restroom with hot water and soap, and there is a water tap out there if you need water. To exit the building, if you came up the stairwell, you can go out through the stairwell and hit the panic bar at the bottom, and out you go.
Thank you. Agenda item number 1A is the approval of the regular session minutes from September 27th, 2021.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nurk.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the vote was unanimous with Councilmember Orris absent. Agenda item number two is the RFP discussion for Heron Park. I'll take a point on that, but before we proceed, I do want to update everyone on a DNR meeting that was rescheduled. It was held on October 4th in reference to program Open Space State Side Funding. We had that meeting with DNR representatives. It was a very good meeting, but the program was determined not to be a fit for that parcel at this time. With that being said, let's move into the RFP discussion. However, I do want to say that when we started this discussion in reference to parcels 57 and 410, we didn't really have anything in-house that fit perfectly to be able to adapt for the Heron Park parcels. So what I did was I reached out to some of the other municipalities, and I do want to publicly thank the city of Saltberry and Mayor Jake Day who sent over voluminous amounts of RFPs for me to look through. We've culminated them into what we think may be the best fit for Heron Park, but I would like to have a discussion with the entire council this evening about a couple of the items within that RFP. So if we look at the document together, there are a couple notes here. We'll just take them top to bottom if everybody's okay with that. On page five, you'll notice item number 1.1, under project overview, the town of Berlin, also referred to as the town hereafter, through this RFP seats highly qualified and blank to lease or purchase and transform parcel 57 and/or parcel 410 at Heron Park in Berlin into a blank in accordance with applicable regulations. Before we get too far into the discussion, I think it's important to note our planning and zoning director mentioned that the parcel is zoned residential, correct?
R1 residential district.
So if items fall outside of the R1 designation, will you please let us know as we're going through the brainstorming process? So anybody want to offer some insight into filling in those two blanks on section 1.1? So what was there just food for thought was, the first blank was seats highly qualified and I think it was reputable development firm, but then some of the discussion in the public listening session and among the former Heron Park Advisory Committee was in reference to possibly a concert venue and things of that nature. So we didn't want to totally box out somebody that could pitch an idea like that by saying that it had to be a development firm, so.
Highly qualified entity.
Okay, I like that.
I do, too. It doesn't limit it.
All right. To lease or purchase and transform parcel 57, for everybody watching at home, that's the processing building, and/or parcel 410, which is that open green space area behind what used to be our single stream recycling, into a...
Do we want to lease it?
Well, I figured that as I was typing this away and culminating them, that we didn't want to box ourselves in if a viable lease came through it. But it's up to this group.
So we have lease or purchase. That work.
Which is into, I'd say, Heron Park in Berlin in accordance with that pool of regulations.
Okay, and leave the...
But then we're going to box on that if it's going to be something with a residential.
And we also have some room to further define that in section 1.5, which is development objectives. We can further define that.
Yeah.
But I hope you please remember, whatever restrictions you put, if the pie is this big, when you start putting those restrictions, that pie gets smaller and smaller.
Yeah, I don't think we're in accordance with applicable regulations, because that's kind of good of that saying, but I mean, there may be someone comes in and says they want to make a zoning change, and that's not here.
Gaskell, do you see anything that would limit us or cause liability on the town if we put or if we remove the in accordance with applicable regulations?
I don't see any liability, but I would leave it in there.
Okay, so then let's strike it to read parcel 57 and/or parcel 410 at Heron Park in Berlin in accordance with applicable regulations. And then, let's see, the completed project would provide a blank for the town of Berlin down at the bottom of section A, 1.1.
Neither.
Okay. Strike it.
Strike it.
And then I'm going to strike a i below that section as well, if that's okay. And we'll define that in 1.5. All right, the background, I think, is self-explanatory. We'll put in some of the programs like, let's see, noted. All right, so we'll use some language and also pull from, I think Worcester County's Economic Development Office has some statistics and stuff that we could probably put in this section.
And the background section?
Yes. Yes, the background section. And we'll plug, there's a description on the website also describing the town of Berlin. We'll add some of that language in this as well. We'll discuss like the proximity to the beaches, the major highways that are along the town. All right, so let's go to section 1.3, the site description. I've asked Planning and Zoning Director Dave Engelhardt to help fill that in along with some of that information that's available on S-STAT. Fast forward to section 1.5, the development objectives. So underneath section A, it says, "Highly aesthetic quality project which is harmonious with the objectives of the town of Berlin's goals for housing, jobs, businesses, eateries, industrial uses, etc. Proposals containing the following aspects will be weighted the most favorably." I think this is where we're going to help define the parameters of which each proposal is graded upon for submission, so I do think we need to add some specifics in this scoreboard.
What about multi-use?
What about it? Are we open to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Multi-use?
And I think anything you have in a lease or a purchase agreement is going to have to be highly contingent, because in the R1 residential district, the way both parcels are zoned, all you can put there is single-family homes. That's it. You can't have a mixed-use building there. You can't have a multi-unit building. You can't have townhouse developments unless a planned unit development was done. So I think any contract you enter into with anybody on their concept for the whole property or one or both properties would have, for them, for their protection, would have to be contingent that upon approval from all sections of the town code, they would like to deliver this product, that home. And you know, the rezoning, you're familiar with the process. We've done several of them over the years. There's two criteria. See, have you have a significant change in the surrounding area of the neighborhood, or that there was a mistake in the prior zoning. Now, we zoned this R1 upon annexation after the purchase of the properties, because that's where parks are allowed in our zoning code. We needed to make it R1s, you could call it a park and not have the previous industrial use or... So that was the reason all the parcels were, in June 2016, when we did the annexation, they were all made R1 residential district to accommodate the park, because at the time the thinking was it was all going to be parkland for the town, regardless of what we did with the buildings. So they would have been recreational uses or park. So you have to be careful there to, I mean, people will say, "It's R1. I don't want anything to do with it. I'm not going to put single-family homes there." Maybe they will, I don't know, but it would have to be highly contingent for whoever's interested as the buyer. And then as far as the process, when you do a rezoning, it goes before the planning commission after an advertised public hearing for their recommendation to your body, and then another public hearing is advertised and scheduled for you to take the planning commission's recommendations. So any discussion of the uses or the concept or the, what's going to be maybe a proposed use, it's going to have to include the planning commission by our code, by our charter. So I just want you to be aware of those things.
So that limits, with that being said, that limits what can be placed within these five placeholders. Does the current zoning, because multi-use, that's not a void at this point, and many others. Is that what I'm saying? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, PUD, you can pretty much, it's, I mean, it's anything goes.
That's why I said, or a planned year development.
So if someone were coming and say, "I want to do a PUD," it's basically, this is the thing I think is so great about having this mixed-use follow-up, and you would probably still require, especially if like the front building ends up being a business, or it's going to have to be rezoned. But I think anybody could argue, this neighborhood change, and I think it was a mistake to kind of chicken plant a bit in the middle of town. So I think maybe those arguments could be used pretty easily.
And they're not our argument, that's state statute.
Exactly.
The land use argument. We have to conform with that.
Yeah.
Troy, can you tell us what PUD means?
Planning and Development. Wall of Hill.
Just so, that's what I'm saying.
So now, Dave, what's the way that we set the town of Berlin up for the best way to solicit these ideas in the form of this RFP and let people know that we're at least willing to consider some of those zoning changes if they're an applicable project?
Well, the way the town code's written, say it was for a rezoning for a certain layout, whatever development you want to put on the property, that is by the code first referred to the mayor and council, and they send it to the planning commission for their consideration and recommendation, then it comes back to you whether you agree with their recommendation or not. So my thought would be, we take it to the plan, whatever comes in, if, say you had five different plans, it could be a work session, or it could be just a discussion item of one of the planning commission meetings to look at the concepts, to look at, all right, I'm going to have some mixed-use retail, like a little village out front, just using an example, and some housing units to the rear so they could see the ponds and the wild, you know, the wild fowl and, you know, the nature. That's just a thought. So that would be, you show it to the planning commission. I get, you need to get them involved, because anything's going to start with them, and you'd have to do something jointly with them, would be my thought. And let them see each one that submitted, and you'll get their feedback.
What about, there's a committee that's going to need to review this? What about putting, all the RFPs are going to come in, the committee's going to review and score them. What about putting two members of the planning commission on that committee?
You could do that. I, you know, I'm not going to speak for them.
I mean, we're brainstorming, so I mean, they could decide.
I would think they might even say, "Well, bring it to us." So they can all look at it.
But what language needs to go in this document so we're not pigeonholed by R1 zoning? So someone, a developer could potentially look at this and say, "Okay, I can go beyond the R1 zoning and do something, maybe it's B2, whatever."
That's what I was saying, you need some kind of contingency in there, because...
Right, we need to encourage developers to do that, not just look at this and say, "Oh, it's R1. All I can build is single-family homes."
You would have to put the language in there that says, "Beyond the R1 primary, you know, permitted uses would require a rezoning or planned unit development." That's all you could do.
That's the easiest way of saying it.
So then why don't we put that in the general intent? And why don't you and Gaskell work on the language that can be placed there so that people understand that we're at least willing to entertain projects that may not be a R1 zoning fit? And in that process, let's brainstorm as if we're not precluded by zoning in section 1.5. So I'm hearing multi-use, commercial, recreational?
Business.
Business.
And I'll also point out, we've had a lot of discussion in the past, of course, a different makeup of the mayor and council, but one of the reasons that, I believe the intention of the previous mayors and councils that they bought the property was, you do not have a return to an industrial use, so you might want to strike that word in section 1.5.
Industrial use.
Industrial use, because that can lead to a lot of things you don't want there.
Now, one thing that...
Housing, jobs, businesses, eateries, yeah, that, those are all good things, but industrial uses, I don't, I personally don't like that one in there, because I don't think that was the intent when the property was purchased.
What's this body feel about that?
I think I agree.
Yeah. It's good, though.
All right, so we have multi-use, commercial, business, recreational. We don't, just because I put five there doesn't mean there have to be five.
And I don't know, any one of them might weigh heavier or less than another if it was the right fit.
That's what I...
I would say, can we include, well, where we have it there?
I'm wondering about the scoring of the various proposals.
We have to have a metric, so.
Yeah. We have to have, we have to have something that's going to allow us to score the various proposals the same sort of way it's treated the same. And that needs to be communicated to the possible voters.
What about doing a subsection underneath the i to contain parcel 57, and then we box out what we would like to see the most favorably in 57, which is the building, and then we box out 410 to say, "What would we like to see more favorably here?" And see where it comes in.
That's a thought.
See, but if we said that upfront, we're actually limited what we get.
Rather than leaving it open to combinations of what could happen here.
We want to encourage creativity.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to leave it like, everybody, I've talked to it, it's part 410, it comes out, but that's a hurt. Somebody walks in here and says something, just, "Oh, you changed my mind." Surely, I wouldn't believe it. I wouldn't believe it anyway.
Proposals containing the following aspects will be weighted the most favorably, and that's saying multi-use, commercial, business, and recreational. So if somebody comes in with an industrial use, one we struck, we already struck that word, but it's going to be weighted unfavorably, you know what I mean? So I think that in some ways, we're focusing some of those.
You're on the right track here.
All right, we can come back to some of those.
Wouldn't you, out of necessity, have to add residential to that list? Because it's zoned R1?
You're going to have a big problem.
Well, just a house. But do you have to say that, because you already have houses up there above? Like I was, like all of this, many, most of that's already covered, and housing, business, housing, jobs, business, eateries. I guess we're being more specific, is that what we're doing here?
Yeah, I wouldn't weigh it, but it's a residential. And I think the line that you got, one of you said about creativity needs to be put in there somewhere.
Creative design?
Yes.
I like creative design, number, but just go.
What about a highly aesthetic, creative design, creatively designed quality project?
Highly aesthetic. Creatively.
No. Do we need to say how highly aesthetic, creative, design will be determined? Because what is...
Highly creative, aesthetic, design.
Hey, I like chicken in your house, but they don't put one on top of that.
It may not be.
All right, well, do you want to further define that? I don't know either.
How do you do that?
As determined by a mayor and council.
They tap you on the hole. I think it's in there.
That's funny.
But I, I think it's ours.
That's fine.
All right, we can come back to adding some stuff through there as we proceed. And here in 1.6, scope of the work, I have under F, obtain all required approvals from the town of Berlin. This may be also a nice place to plug the rezoning if it fits outside of the R1. I don't think it hurts to reiterate some of that. On page seven.
Zach, going back to 1.5 for a minute, how about putting a line in there about projects must be in keeping with the design style of Berlin?
It's good, I like it.
The architectural and design style.
I was thinking that, too, but what if somebody comes up with something that's just a little different than what we are, but it's a great idea? Then what? No, I'm not saying something completely radical, but...
You don't really want a modern building in town. I mean, the historic commission just turned down one.
Right.
Look at number six. So VI, build a positive identity. Organize, build, and sustain the image of the historic downtown area as attractive, interesting, and vibrant. We can add some language in there to clarify that if you would like.
Well, the historic district commission's chapter uses the word complementary, which is complementary to the existing architecture and surrounding area. In other words, it's consistent, it's not something, you know, like you're saying, modern, a glass and steel tower next to a Victorian building. So it's complementary.
But it gives you a lot of flexibility with design.
Gives you the wiggle room.
I like the wiggle room.
So let's make it say, "Build a complementary identity. Organize, build, and sustain the image of the historic downtown area as attractive, interesting, and vibrant." Is that okay?
I like complementary.
I like complementary.
I like that, too. All right, let's see here. We're going to put some information in here, and I think this does fall within the Maryland State Enterprise Zone, I'm pretty sure.
It does.
So there are some facts, credits, and stuff associated with that. So we'll plug in that information under F as well. So I don't want to box ourselves in as far as the strategic demolition grant, but that should hopefully come November, December. So I think if we extend something out about 180 days, that should give us enough time to determine that. Does anybody have an idea of the timeframe in monitoring?
Is that four months?
Yeah.
That's good.
All right. And then, sorry. So on page nine, comprehensive plan for the use of the site. This should include, but not be limited to, plans for renovation or demolition, use planned when renovation or demolition has been completed, anticipated neighborhood impact if applicable, adjust the traffic, parking, pedestrian traffic, noise, construction.
Habit, habit impact on the environment.
Okay. Good idea. Environmental impact.
And again, those are all things that are done by the planning commission on site plan approval.
So it's not unreasonable for us to request that information?
No. They have to be preparing it at some point along the line anyway.
Is there anything else that they would need for those phases of approval that is missing from this?
Well, we're not talking about permits here, we're talking about a proposal from that.
Correct.
There's a whole string of things, you know, stormwater management approval, the utilities and the site approvals, you know, connections to all water, to our sewer, to the electric department for Tim, but usually those are things that are done for site plan approval before the planning commission. Once those are gained and those approvals are, you know, acquired, they move right to building permits. That's further on down the line. That's not really with your concept. You know, we know we can, we can get them water and sewer, we know we can get them Tims electric, it's just, you know, they're going to have to do their own estimates of that. We're not going to figure out what it's going to cost for them. They're supposed to come to us with a plan to approve, is the way I look at this.
And Mayor, I...
You know, we're not even designing for them. I think we can't do that.
And the question I have, and I don't know how we would word that in here as well, I believe that that building, the grounds on parcel 57, I believe, are clean. However, there's a lot of underground piping. I don't know what's inside that piping, I don't even know where the piping is. So I think that needs to be...
What language do we put in there to cover us on that?
I think any hazardous findings are borne by the developer.
All right.
Should there be. I don't think any of us can, I mean, I have no idea where the pipes are in that building.
Oh, I would have to say, the buyer has to do their due diligence.
Yes.
Would the county have building plans for that?
Nope.
It goes back to...
We've gone, we've gone. And that leads me to the next, the next concern, and I don't want to be the David Thomas here, but we still have not closed out with EPA or with MBE, and I don't know when this is going to happen.
What is the timeframe on that?
Yeah, when they get ready.
But now, wouldn't that run with the back parcel is separate, right?
Correct.
So wouldn't that run with the back parcel?
Yeah. I think.
I would lean on Gaskell for that, but...
Well, I honestly don't know.
Could we look into that if you don't mind?
We have, we have council, that outside council that was handling this whole issue for us.
Maybe once we have the more finalized draft of this, let's kick that over to her to see if there's any liability that we're missing or overlooking. All right, so what I'm hearing is that in addition to the items listed under C on page nine, we want to add environmental impact and some information about stormwater, electric water and sewer. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Can we just say town services?
There you are, I like that even better. Is that okay?
Yeah, because that covers everything.
Yep, trash, all of it.
Yeah.
We're talking impact, correct?
Yes. Comprehensive plan for the use of the site, which includes but not limited to, so yeah, I think that town services would be a good one to explore. All right, let's see here. If there's something that grabs somebody's attention as we're making our way through this, let me know.
Could have been bigger.
Could have been bigger? I'll do bigger text next time. All right, page 14, number two, easements for installation and maintenance of utilities will be reserved to the town as required. Do we need to further define that? And we have to also look at possibly an access point that we want to maintain to the passive use.
Does this again defer back to planning and zoning or the planning commission, this easement section?
No.
Nope, I didn't know if they needed to, you know what I mean, the 12 feet this way, 85.
Usually, usually any easement will be shown on a site plan. So we'll be prepared, but they don't approve or deny them.
So in the note I put, need to discuss maintaining access to the passive use section of the property, along with any buildings that we want to keep for storage, because some of those buildings are being used to store what?
Winter, winter equipment.
Zach, what line is that?
It's page 14, II, easements for installation and maintenance of utilities will be reserved to the town as required. Do we want to put something in here saying that we want to keep that existing roadway that leads back? Or?
I think we need, it says, a, we need a standard road access.
Public access.
Public access.
And put a small area for parking for the park use.
Sure. Do we want to maybe define that on a, on a shot of, I think that we need to keep the square that's probably closest to that, what is it, it looks like a silo, but it's not, it was for chemical.
Right, and water.
The water tank.
So the water tank area and the road that leads back to the passive use section, to Jay's point, I think, or Councilmember Nurse's point, we should shade that out and say that that is not within this scope where it needs to be maintained.
But if I, if I could add one thing, for, since I've been here eight years, our aim when we're approving projects is to accept as dedicated to the town as little infrastructure as possible, and that's a sustainability thing. We're trying to make sure we don't have things to repair and maintain 30 years down the road. So the developer's road is his road. The pipes and the lift stations inside of the curb are his, not the town's, we are responsible for hooking up to them. So you might want some language in here, in these legal pages, that say, nothing in this agreement shall encumber the town of Berlin to accept any dedication of town infrastructure, roadways, et cetera, without approval of the mayor and council, because that's what we've done diligently to save us ourselves money and save future budgets and not have to construct a road under our terms for town standards, which we have, and we guide them to them all the time. Build it to town standards if we were gonna have it dedicated to us. Just asking them to build it to town standards doesn't mean we have to take it. So I would just make sure you have some kind of language like that in there.
Kelsey, can we make sure we capture that statement verbatim for the minutes? And then we'll extract that and put it in. Thank you.
I'm not sure I could.
Well, that's how we report these things, so that's good.
No, that's good.
All right, anything outside of that? Yes, Marie, just state your name, we know each other, but state your name and property.
400 West Street. How are the people that are buying the property going to get to 410? Isn't that off to the right of those buildings and all, that section? If you shade that as public or town access, that's not their road, it's ours, right?
Yes, but I, I think that in doing so, if we're gonna maintain that as a town road leading to a park, that that could be open for use for 410 as well.
They could access on that.
Yeah, it's a public right of way. That's a good point, though, thank you. And we'll add as an attachment also that shaded map. All right, let's see. Page 15, okay, that's more for David Gaskell, whether that needs to be defined. It says here, amendments that the LDC for the sale of the subject property or properties may be modified, including provisions pertaining to land use, building, and site modification before or after the transfer of property with written approval of the town council by resolution. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, let's see. Can I wait through this thing? All right, I think up next gets to Dean's point on grading, which we're all gonna have to sharpen our pencils. So on page 21, it starts to break down the development criteria, evaluation criteria. So it goes from 4.15 on page 20, evaluation criteria. The following table shows evaluation criteria, and then it starts to apply points and define the criterion for which we'll apply those points. So the highest weight is at the monetary value offered for the property or properties. At 50 points, 25 points, the use and development of property or properties as defined by the proposer, which is us, or which is them, in the proposal documents. 20 points, balance sheet provides evidence that the entity's liquidity is above industry standards, and the income statement provides evidence as suitable cash flows. Project cash flow is equal cash flow for the project, the project provides evidence the project is fundable and sustainable. Five, such, five points for such other and further factors as the advisory committee may wish to consider.
Zach, I think you're weighing the financial aspect too high and not putting enough on the design and the development.
Can you offer a suggestion and reweight it?
Say either 10 or 15 for balance sheet, and then put the, that balance into the second one.
So 10 and this, the second one goes to 35?
Yeah, so the third one was 10, and then the second one goes to 35, yeah.
We also want to make sure that we don't, I, I don't disagree with restructuring, but five points might not seem like a lot, but we do want somebody that is financially capable of doing whatever endeavor.
Absolutely.
So why don't we knock it down to 15?
Okay.
And go up to 30?
Okay.
So then it's 50 points for the monetary value proposed, 30 points, or up to 30 points for the use and redevelopment of the property, 15 points for the liquidity and capabilities of handling their proposal, and then five points for other factors.
I like that more.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You might want to mention in there, under the, the entity's liquidity, that somehow it probably, this, a project like, we're anticipating a large mixed-use project, I would think, the way people are, because you got, between the two parcels, you got almost 19 acres total. So I would think that we would probably require this be bonded anyway. So when, when it all gets torn up to meet our services out on Old Ocean City Boulevard someday, if that entity was to fold or to move to Arizona, the bond provides the town the means to fix that mess or complete the project with another public-private partnership. So some kind of bonding language needs to be put in there.
And what is the threshold as a percentage typically of the project? And what?
I would, usually I defer, I get an estimate, a lot of times, myself and different department directors, Tim, Jamie, and Jeff, we consult with DBF. They give us an engineer's estimate, which is usually on the high side, and the bonds we've gotten in the past, we haven't gotten them for all projects. I believe, Jeff, you can correct me, they've been like 15, 1.15%?
They've been 15% above the.
15% above the engineer's estimate. So, in other words, if the project was $1 million, they're gonna bond it for $1 million, 150,000, you know, 15% higher. And that's just a bond. So they pay for that, it's like paying for insurance. They have a carrying cost, and that is retired, generally a year after the project's completed and as-built are provided by the developer. In other words, the as-built tells you, tells our engineers what the design was. Yep, that's where the building sits, and yep, that's where that pipe is in the ground. The as-built are drawings later after the project is completed to confirm the original design. That's when they can ask us to release the bond. So it's protection for the town, so you don't get left with a white elephant, a half-completed project. And I would think if this is something of larger scale and we're looking at it as a showcase, right, we want a nice use there, we'd be asking for bonding anyway.
So bonding, I'm sorry, currently, I, I, it's not required currently on larger projects?
Oh, yeah.
All of them. So why don't we lean on DBF to determine what that percentage should be, and we will add that as a minimum to the weighting criteria?
But can we also, when discussing bonding, I hear you say 12 months or a year, I don't think that's enough time.
12 months a year, 12 months.
Right, bottom and completion. I hear what you're saying, but I still don't think that's enough time. Can you, can we, can we possibly consider 18 months? I know that six months doesn't sound like a lot more, but it could make a difference. Is that something to?
But if I'm not mistaken, if you tie up, the developer may have bonding capabilities of X.
Right.
And if you start to tie that up, it limits their ability to bond to other projects.
I hear you, I understand that.
And the number is 150%. You take the construction costs, you go 150%, and that letter of credit or bond needs to be posted with the town.
Right.
For, if it's 100 grand, it's a $150,000 bond. You get it back a year after, however, there's still some maintenance bonds that are lingering at that.
Okay.
They're like, still 10% of whatever that total amount was.
Right, maintenance bonds.
And it goes another two years, even after that.
I just want to make sure that those things are in place, because I don't want us to be possession like we have been.
Well, we, if, if they're gonna say they're gonna do this, and they're gonna say, here it is, we're gonna have to.
But the bond, bond actually doesn't, that doesn't mean we own it.
Oh, no, I hear you, I understand.
Okay, you know, that's, I want that to be clear, you know, if they bond the roadways and utilities and all that are on their property, that's just protection for us, it doesn't mean we're taking ownership.
No, 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 I hear you.
To maintain.
I just wanted, I was just hoping to be protected a little bit longer.
There's the two years after the first year. For the maintenance. Yep.
And that's what I, and that's why, that's, I'm glad you mentioned maintenance, because in my mind, I was thinking, I didn't, maintenance wasn't sitting right here, I was thinking all of it, it was all or nothing.
Well, and you've also got, you've got every inspector, it paid for by the developer of the towns to inspect it while it's being built, to make sure there isn't anything wrong. And then we've got three years after that, basically, for all that bond gets refunded. So you got about three years on your.
So we'll make sure we add that language into this, as well as the appropriate percentages and time horizon.
Yes.
So it's all added. Anything else that needs to be added to this section? All right, let's see here. The rest of this is pretty much forms, so I'm gonna lean on Gaskell to make sure that we have the correct information within those forms. And disclosures, and then we get to the resources, where I think that, like we discussed with the map, and the access point to the passive use section, I think we should include the studies that have been conducted on the property. Any additional information that anybody can think of? Maybe a link to the comprehensive plan?
So what happens, I'm a big developer out there, this gets, this goes live, what happens if you, if we have a developer that has interest in 57, but not 410?
It's either or.
Okay.
And I don't think that, as we have it written now, that bidding on both parcels is seen more favorably than just bidding on one.
Correct.
So it kind of provides that flexibility, or at least that's how I see this document.
But a developer could come in and want both parcels.
Correct, yes, I mean, they could bid on all of them, yeah. Any other resources that people think we should add to this?
If anything comes to mind. So Zach, one question, under the section six required forms.
Page number 21?
Yeah, 23.
23.
Affidavit of qualification, do we want to ask for just some photos or write-up of previous projects they've done?
Yeah, I don't think that would, that would hurt, I thought that was somewhat captured in here, but hold on.
It's in here somewhere, I've seen it.
I didn't remember seeing it, but, hold on.
Put it in Verbitz's portfolio or something?
I don't remember. If the font's a little smaller, then I'll do it.
So we could provide a little bit more context, possibly to section two, the proposal requirements.
So they submit pictures and brief write-up of what they.
I don't think that was in here. I know if you look here on page nine, it says additional background up to five pages. We can further define that a little bit.
Yeah, maybe that would be helpful.
But maybe with examples?
Correct.
For references.
I like references too.
Yeah.
I was gonna say references.
Previous projects.
Feedback from the, from the new site.
All right, so, hold on, let's see, let's, letter of interest, financial capacity to complete, let's put, where F is, we'll go down one, and we're gonna, we're gonna request up to two pages.
Two pages.
Of previous projects, and then, and then, let's say, up to two pages of references.
Two pages, references.
And then we'll put additional background, we'll give them five pages if they want to elaborate. All right. Anything else that comes to mind?
Can we pass, can we ask for feedback from those places? I mean, you can show us the pictures and whatnot, but can we?
Yeah, it says somewhere in here, hold on, let me see, I think it says that we, it talks about the due diligence we can do. Let me see, I think it's evaluation until election, so page 11? I gotta find it, but I think I remember it in here.
Let's see, all your past performance on previous acquisition contracts?
Where are you at?
I'm on B triple I, equals I to a certain power, is that, is that what you were thinking?
Oh, no, it says in here that it, it does not.
Hold on.
And, but the references you're looking for, governmental or municipal?
Let them determine their best references, and we'll, I think that says a lot about.
But I think that's what Ms. Nichols is after, is, you said the other places they maybe developed a project.
Yeah, I want, I'd like to hear.
You're looking from, you want to hear from the city of Salisbury.
Exactly, or, yep, whomever, I'd like to hear that. Exactly, or, yep, whomever, I'd like to hear that, from them, not just from him showing us photos, but from that, yep, that municipality or entity.
Receiver.
Well, wouldn't the committee, when it's making a determination of who to select, contact those places, anyone?
You would think that.
Would think that.
You would think that, but I wouldn't, I don't wanna assume anything.
Okay.
Hold on one second, there's some language in here.
You can find the papers, Zach, just make a note of it.
Wanted to make sure the dress, all right, I think we're gonna have to, Command F feature, a lot better than my own, all right, anything else? All right, if anything comes to mind from anyone, please let us know, we'll work on making those changes and try to have that back to everybody on the 25th, so that we can get this going. All right, let's see, get back to our agenda. So item number three on the agenda, item A, motion 2021-25, motion approving the 2022 event schedule as submitted. Our economic and community development director was gonna run point, but she is receiving our Sustainable Maryland award.
She has.
So, Jeff, do you wanna take that?
I've got it, the, if you go in your packet, the first page that starts out with Reston Week, date is 110 to 116, okay? The packet, as you see, is, is correct with the exception, if you drop down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, number 7, Berlin Reggae Play Day, for 2022, it is on a Saturday versus a Friday night, and it is from 1 to 4, not 5 to, I can't read because I scratched it out, but it's, yep, so it's 1, it's 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, that's the only change that you see.
So it's the 15th?
And it's on the 14th. It, it, the date's correct, but this year, the Reggae Play Day would have been on a Friday day.
Got you.
It was moved to a Saturday, Arnold likes that very much. There are six alcohol events, so there's been no change on that as well. You're gonna count seven, but if you get a look, Fiddler's Convention is two days from September 1.
And we are looking for action this evening, but then, no.
Motion to approve the scheduled event calendar.
Thank you, I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols to approve motion 2021-25.
Does that motion include approving of the alcohol events as presented?
Yes.
That has to go to-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the schedule as it states, with the change of the time and the six alcohol events.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols for motion 2021-25, approving the event schedule as outlined with the changes, and including the six alcohol events. I have a second by Councilmember Purnell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and let the record reflect that motion 2021-25 passes unanimously. Up next is item 3B, which is motion 2021-26, motion approving the holiday schedule for 2022, and the Deputy Town Administrator Mary Bolden will run point on that.
These are the same holidays as typically approved, with the exception that we've added the Juneteenth, International Independence Day, from Monday, June 20.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Barrell to approve motion 2021-26.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Merritt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect that motion 2021-26 passes unanimously. Item number 3C is motion 2021-27, motion approving a fiscal year 2022 budget amendment, increasing expenses and revenue accounts associated with capital improvements in the Stormwater Fund. The allocation is for up to $110,000 from ARPA grant, the details of the budget amendment are attached in the motion, Exhibit A, and our Finance Director Natalie Slay will run point on this.
But in, in the previous meeting, you have discussed the capital improvements for the Stormwater, and you have agreed to allocate ARPA grant money to fund the project to improve the Stormwater. This is simply a change in the budget as was previously adopted. So the ARPA grant of 110 will be recorded under revenue in the Stormwater Fund, and the full amount of up to 110 will be expensed under the capital improvements for the Stormwater.
Any questions for our Finance Director?
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, motion 2021-27 by Councilmember Merritt.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Barrell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and motion 2021-27 passes unanimously, thank you. Item number four is the Town Administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I'm gonna probably steal a little bit of Tim's thunder, and probably, well, Jamie's not here, but, next, excuse me?
Steal away, Jamie's not here.
Steal away. Next Tuesday is the target date for the trimming of trees off Commerce Street in the parking lot, on the right-hand side, if you turn off Main Street, go down Commerce, behind the shops there, those trees are gonna get trimmed next week. And you do, you will find up on Pitt Street and Main Street, those trees have been trimmed and lights have been hung, if you've not seen them, then you need to have your eyes checked, but they're there. Jamie and I attended a meeting with State Highway, a pre-con meeting, US Route 113 and Maryland Route 376, the contract has been awarded to Bramble, they expect work to begin within the next 30 days, that work will take place in the evening hours, so there'll be no disruption during, during the normal duty day. The contractor that was awarded, the contract to install new roofs on the pavilions at Stephen Kater Park, Henry Park, and the Plaine Building, should be on site tomorrow, Thursday at the latest, over, I've given them an objective to finish up Henry Park by Friday this week, that way it's, it's clean and new before we do the basketball court dedication on Sunday. So that's the plan, today's weather, I don't know what it did to them on their big picture, but the plan is that they're gonna be here by the end of the week, and again, two days to do that, it'll go from Henry Park to Stephen Kater Park, and then from there to the Plaine Building. Saturday, this coming Saturday is Oktoberfest, so I'm sure there'll be a lot of people in town. State Highway has informed, informed us that they're in the process of signing their new contract with concrete work, so they've asked us to take a really, really good look at all of our state roads, and look at the sidewalk curving, anything that we need done, we're gonna ensure that it'll be taken care of. So Jimmy, Jamie, and I will take a trip probably this week, but as you're out and about, if you have something that you see on any, any place, first of all, but if you can give me locations, again, anything that's on the state road, state highways assure me that those things will be repaired. Ivy is, should be home now, but she did go over to Alchemist City today to accept the Berlin Award for Sustainable Maryland. You got a picture, or you got, okay, good. That's the plaque that hangs downstairs, the New Bronze Plate was added on the bottom there. Again, we were, when I say we, the town of Berlin was the first to be certified, and when you take a look at that, there's four placards on there, each of those four cycles, the town has been the first to be recertified. And the other interesting statistic, and I sent it all to you in an email today, as of calendar year 2020, there are 157 municipalities in the state of Maryland, 79 of those municipalities have registered in this program, and only 39 are certified.
Great job.
So, it's a, it's a pretty big deal, it helps out a lot when we apply for grants, doesn't cause us anything to do other than the mileage that Ivy had to make today to be able to receive that award, so it's, it's well worth, it's well worth the effort, I can tell you that.
Awesome.
And that concludes my report.
You have two more pictures.
Okay, that picture there, it's over at Henry Park, and you can see three power lines at the top, drop down, right below the power lines, you see that black object?
Yep.
That is a solar light, to put illumination on the US flag, so that we are in code with, with public law.
These are my cell phone pictures, so, I'm sure there are better pictures, these are my cell phone pictures.
The courts look fantastic.
These are, they're grown.
If you've not been over, they look fantastic, I'm gonna steal Jimmy's thunder for a moment. Thursday, Jimmy and Tim and Jamie, folks will be involved to hang the backboards and the goals and the pole pads, and then Sunday is the dedication, and Tony told me this morning that they're gonna, gonna probably start everything after 12 noon, there's gonna be, I believe, Summarize Church is providing-
Someone is providing-
Someone's providing food and water, it's all being donated, so we'll have extra trashcans, everything will be spruced up over there, and then for everyone's dedication, over at Henry Park, if you park your vehicle at the end of the parking lot on the park side, on the right-hand side, between the parking lot and the pavilion, we have a memorial there for Wendell Purnell, prior Public Works Superintendent. The dogwood tree that we had planted had decided it didn't wanna grow anymore, so we're gonna plant a new one this week as well, so that'll be in place before Sunday as well. And that concludes my report.
While we're talking about the event for Love Day-
Yes.
Let's plan on doing the shutdown like we typically do for National Night Out.
Okay.
If that's possible. And then the other thing is, is that, I don't know if anybody recalled when we swore in, Jeff, you'll remember this, because it came up during the interview process with Mr. Parks, but when we swore in the Board of zoning appeals, Mr. Parks handed me an envelope of all the sidewalks-
Yep.
-that he inventoried around town that need repairs, so I'll make sure you get that as well.
I love it.
Just to add to our list. Any other questions for the Town Administrator? All right, let's go on to departmental reports, and we'll start with our Planning and Zoning Director, Dave Inglehart.
I don't have anything further, Mr. Mayor, you listened to me enough.
Well, thank you for your insight, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next is our Electric Utility Director, Tim, yeah, Tim Lawrence, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I just have a few things to report on. The first thing, I believe this is the first council meeting since the Touch a Truck event. The Touch a Truck event, I thought, was fantastic, we had a great turnout, and from what I understand, we received a lot of positive feedback about the event. So I just wanna thank everybody that participated in that, Jimmy, all your guys, and Jamie and Water and Sewer and Public Works, Police Department, Maryland State Police, Worce County Emergency Services, Berlin Fire and Rescue, and Berlin Police Department, it was, it was a great event, I think the kids really enjoyed it a lot, and the adults did, too, they learned a lot. Then also, the main project we've been working on, like Jeff mentioned, is in the downtown area, the tree lighting, we're actually going through trimming the trees ahead of time before we install the lights, and like Jeff mentioned, at Pitt Street and Main Street, those trees are already finished, which I think look fantastic, they're all fed underground now instead of overhead, so they really turned out nice. And then other than that, is we're doing some work at the power plant, this is the time of year when we do a lot of maintenance work, normally generate in summer and winter, so this is what's called the shoulder months, this is when we get to do all the maintenance work at the plant, during that downtime. Other than that, this, that's about it.
So with regard to Touch a Truck, I, I don't, I think many of you know this, but with a little guy at home, most of you are household heroes, like literally, the street sweepers, the electric trucks, all, all that stuff, they love it, but seeing all the little kids and light up, and the amount of sirens that were blaring, I think next year maybe we need to turn the master switches off, some of those, but-
Tell me your idea. Okay, they said we should take an air horn and put it across the street, and its own pumping air compressor, and then just let the kids blow on it, on whatever, I'll set it.
That's pretty cool.
He said after Touch a Truck, he said, you know, I don't know if my sweeper's gonna start tomorrow. There's so many buns pushing.
Yeah, the little, the little kids love it, so, other than if, if half of them talk about it the way that Charlie did, it was a success, so.
And I do.
Also, I think you're being somewhat modest, I saw a press release come out from us in reference to an award from AMP, do you wanna elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, I was gonna wait until-
Don't get into the specific one, please.
Oh, okay, I think you talked about the one-
Yes.
Overall?
Yes.
Talked about that?
One could be a surprise.
Okay, but it can't be much of a surprise, because one of them went out with a press release.
Yeah. What's the surprise?
Basically, that is a safety award from AMP, for basically no loss accidents within the electric utility, we're actually graded on that, they look at how many man-hours were lost, accidents, that type of thing. I think we've won this, like, three, four times?
This is year five.
Five times. So this is an award that we received for, basically for being safe, so, thank you.
It's a really big accomplishment, so, thank you.
And I, I did place that on our next agenda, I don't think I knew last week if Tim was gonna be here today, so I didn't wanna put it on without him being here, so I moved it to our next agenda, so.
So, well, this is some good news, we don't mind talking about that a couple times.
Okay.
Yep.
Congratulations on that.
Congratulations, thank you.
Any questions for our Electric Utility Director? All right, Dave Gaskell, you got anything?
I do not.
All right, let's start at the top of the table on this side, our Finance Director, Natalie Slay.
I'm good, thank you.
Our Public Works Superintendent, Jimmy Charles.
I was just gonna inform us about a penny park this week, first.
We can have amnesia, if you'd like to go in.
Thursday, with the electric, we're gonna put backwards, up and backwards, new rim, add the padding, we're gonna do, make sure the park is looking great for the weekend, bring some picking tables over from the Katers, just add some extra Kater waste wheelers, and just be prepared for hopefully next November.
Are you guys gonna test the rims out?
Jimmy's gonna test them. He'll be 10-foot, but I can test the rim. I love it, yeah.
Very nice, thank you. Our Deputy Town Administrator, Mary Bolden.
The only thing that I know is that the Parks Commission is still looking for volunteers for the Fall Low Walk event, we've seen a handful of people, kind of stand in a couple of street corners, and direct walkers, this is the first time that we've done this kind of event in the evening, I think it's gonna make an interesting visual.
What's the date, ma'am?
It's November the 5th, it's a Friday evening.
When you're, when you're standing on the corner, do you get to have something-
You do, you get an extra special blow stick thing.
Whatever you're stuffing.
No, that right there might be enticing enough, forget about it.
And also, thank you for adding to the webpage, you can click now on the, on the link, and it takes you right to the signup sheet for bulk pickup.
Right, as, as I had indicated, the very first time that we did it, we wanted to kind of force people to take a closer look at the new policy, but after that, we added all direct.
Thank you, it's nice, it's easy to get to. All right, anything else? Any questions for our Deputy Town Administrator? All right, our Administrative Manager, Kelsey Johnson?
I do not have anything this evening.
Okay, thank you. Up next are comments from the Council, Vice President Barrell?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Councilmember Purnell?
Gene Holloway comes now to Work Session.
Gene Holloway is at Work Session, November 1, at 6:00 PM.
And what happened on Branch Street?
Be specific.
Did you get a well?
There's a pump house there, and we have a well that we had some issue with, mechanical issues, that well is currently offline, we are in the process of determining what the next step will be, we currently have both, the, the other two wells, well 1 and well 2, and I'll make it simple, the town operates on about 400 to 500 gallons per day of water. Well 1 generates about 1.5 million gallons a day, and well 2 generates about 500 gallons a day, so we're producing enough water as we speak, but we will circle back, we're working with DBF, and I know I'm gonna work with the mayor as well to come up with a game plan on what we wanna do with well number 3 on Branch Street.
As we said, stay tuned, but yes, either option is gonna cost some money, so, keep it on our radar.
So, if I may, you hit, hit the memory button as well, I- Options are obviously do nothing, which is not right.
Not an option.
Option two is to rehab that well, but taking a 10-inch well and you reduce it, it's gonna reduce the flow by at least 50%, because what you're doing in essence is putting another sleeve inside of that well, so it's gonna reduce the size of the well. And that well, prior to having issues, was producing about 350, 50,000 gallons a day. So, it was, it was the least producing well of all at the end. So, and then option three is obviously do it as well.
I retrograde one. I'm clearing out whatever cost me in the well.
We don't disagree. We've even started looking at other options for locations. The one thing to take away from that too is that there is risk, and Jamie's mentioned that it's not a far-out risk either, because municipalities nearby have had times where they drilled a well, and you cover that expenditure to only reach water that's not suitable. So, when we do it, we wanna make sure we drill it properly and have the best likelihood of success. Also, I think the takeaway is that the town of Berlin has a lot of aging infrastructure, and this well we're looking at is 1940s.
It drilled November of 1948.
So, we're looking at aging infrastructure that needs to be addressed, and which is also a reason that we're looking at those capital plans, so.
How deep's that well?
125 feet.
That's good.
And what happened, the bottom 25 feet is where your screen is. That screen has actually corroded and.
Collapsed.
Collapsed. Still was pumping stone and sand.
Anything else?
Seems like that's a priority in the capital plan.
Most definitely, yeah, we need water. So. Yeah, it's got some aging, so we've got a lot of aging infrastructure that does need to be addressed. Councilmember Nichols, do you wanna go last?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
I just wanted to hear what Jeff said about Oktoberfest this Saturday, 11 to 4. It's a fantastic event. I'll be up there all day volunteering, so we are expecting a huge turnout, hope to see a lot of people, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols, you're up.
Okay, so it's Oktober, and of course, we don't, I'm sorry, you distracted me. Oktober, of course, we know is breast cancer week this month. I'm on my cell phone, so again, folks, females as well as males, get out there, take care of yourself, be preventative so that we're taking care of ourselves, so that we can take care of our families. Not only that, this right here, this Love Day community celebration thing, this is exciting to me, to see that this is happening, though helping to make this, get this beautify this court was, it was great to see all the faces out there, to have seen the photos of the different people that came and played a part in making this happen. It gives me hope for what Berlin can grow to be, and I don't want anybody to take from this that I'm not saying that we aren't community oriented already, because we are. But what I'm saying is, in light of everything that goes on in the world today, we still take the time, even if it's 10 minutes, because I could only, in the timeframe, give 65 minutes literally. Take a few minutes to give back to our community. Thank you to everyone that did so, and for those of you who even had the thought to do so. I know everybody can't be everywhere, but being a part of something is a good thing. Taking pride in your own town, your own neighborhood is a great thing. Shameless plug on my behalf, I would love to see this be something that is entered on our calendar of events on an annual basis. I don't know where that would fit. That's just me talking. So, guys, whoever you are, reach out. We, the town of Berlin, reach out to Ivy to see what can be done as far as that goes. I think we had a great meeting tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, get ready, fall is here. Get your air conditioning and all those things taken care of, get ready for heat. I'm serious, because it is getting chilly, and I hate to hate, and I'm not wishing this on anybody, and I, I sit here and I say these things at the close of meetings, and I don't like being last just because I like to talk, but I always want somebody out there. If nobody but one person hears what I say once every three to four weeks, then I feel good about this. Take the moment, take the time to change your batteries and those detectors.
Inspire for better month.
Is it?
Yep.
Look at that. Change those batteries, get ready, get your house ready. It's time to make those changes. If you need services or whatever done, and you don't, and you can't do it yourself, reach out to those that can help, or reach out to somebody so we can help get you the services you need. That's why we are here, and not only that, I don't even know what I was gonna be saying next, I'm sorry, it's, it's, have a good night.
And just also, you touched on smoke detectors. If you need a smoke detector, reach out to the fire company, they should have some of those.
Not only those, if you're getting, if you're taking care of those things, also, please check into carbon monoxide detectors, because those are equal, if not more important for all of us. Ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, comments from the mayor. I do have a couple things Troy mentioned. Also, just for the public, Gene Holloway will be here. She's with Circap for our analysis of the water and wastewater utility, scheduled for Monday, November 1st, as a work session in this chamber at 6 o'clock PM. Also, I'm gonna reach out, last year, we had this meeting as well with the delegation from District 38. We're gonna try and pull them together again before they go into session, so if you have any items that are on your list, send those my direction, please, so that we can start that. Also, Stephen Decatur High School has their homecoming coming up. I think it's the 18th is the start. They graciously lent us, I think, about two dozen Stephen Decatur flags. So, any businesses that are out there watching this, if you wanna replace your Oakland flag with a Stephen Decatur High School flag, they are on loan, so we need them back. Reach out to my office, it's 410-641-3858, and Joanne Unger will help you with that. Also, Larnette, who makes all the ribbons that we see on the lamppost, is going to do blue and white on the lamppost for Homecoming Week on Main Street. Another reminder, and then it culminates to the football game, so go watch the football game. The five-year capital plans, I have them from some of you, but I'm still missing them from others, so please send that my direction. Yesterday, I was at the MML Conference. I'm the Vice President of the Maryland Mayors Association, and they have, they had a guest speaker in from the National League of Cities regarding ARPA funding and ways to leverage that with the census data to attack some funding that's also available through federal grants, so it's pretty good stuff. I'll pass a copy of that presentation along to this group. And then, Councilmember Nichols, you took my sunshine, which is Love Day. Don't be, don't be upset about that, but it's this Sunday, so come out. That's everything on my list.
Mayor, one quick thing to add. The flags that the mayor mentioned from Stephen Decatur High School, there'll be two flags starting on the 18th that'll be displayed above the, where the flags are on the building here now, Town Hall, there are two static brackets on the wall by the window, so there'll be two Stephen Decatur flags, Stephen Decatur High School flags displayed up there as well.
From, I think it's the 18th to the 23rd.
Yeah, and their homecoming dance is like on the football field.
I know, we're trying to go blue and yellow for, or blue and white, to God. I had yellow and black on my mind. Blue and white for Decatur. All right, so comments from the public. Marie, you're the only one here. You wanna give us anything?
The one thing I was wondering is the discussion about industry and industrial. I kinda think that you have just a bad taste in your mouth from the chicken plant business. Industrial doesn't mean that. I looked it up, and the top five industries, global industries, are manufacturing real estate, commercial real estate, global fast food restaurants, global HR and recruitment services, and it goes down to hotels and resorts, apparel manufacturing, and then gets them through the bad stuff like coal mining, which we don't have anyway. I think that we're being closed-minded in not including that in our RFP.
And the nice part is, is that we struck the word industrial use, but we didn't include it either. So, the, the things that we ranked were kind of at the top or the higher priority list that we would like to see, but it also gives that ability for that group that's evaluating the RFPs to slide points to a creative firm if they have something that they think could be a fit. So, we're not, I don't think any of us are willing to box anything out in its entirety. It's just not one of our heaviest uses that we would like to see, but if something fits and somebody wants to make that proposal, I think we'd be open to seeing it. Good point, though. All right, any more comments from the public? All right, comments from the press, Charlie? All right. Thank you. All in favor? All right, all right, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, National League of Cities.
Yeah, it's cool. I'm gonna send you that presentation, it's awesome.
I'm telling you, I, I would love to see us be a part of that, the council.